Welcome to City Hall, welcome to our City Council meeting. Today is April the 26th. We do have a forum for our meeting tonight. First up we have Johnny Gomez, John Rino, and Councilman Castillo. I'm gonna ask our Councilor to read to us some prayer.
Our heavenly Father, thank you for this gathering of folks on this beautiful evening. Bless those who are present as well as those who are not able to attend this conference. Thank you for the abundant blessings you have bestowed upon us, through your charity and citizens. It is only for your honorary glory that we strive to take care of your gift, this land, its culture, and its environment. Thank you for giving us the freedom to embrace the vision of healthy growth for our city, make possible only through your grace. We pray for our challenging challenges that be more and greater. Give us the wisdom to govern around conflicting interests and discern right from wrong in identifying the true needs of our city. Give us the courage to do the right thing, keep us in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. All this we ask from the name of Jesus Christ.
For the public's knowledge, we're waiting for somebody from M&amp;S Engineering, so we're gonna move the agenda around a little bit. Actually, I'm gonna start from the bottom up until we get our first M&amp;S on the way. Let's start with item J, consideration of action to accept letter from Mayor Prosser, Jesse Chris Floyd approving a leave of absence from the council. The council would have been working out of town, he's missed the last couple of meetings, and he just wants to, wants the public to be aware that he is working out of town and requires a request of council's excuse for his absence. The council should have him delivering the package there. And I'll read it from the public's knowledge. It says, "Dear Mayor Tejada, please excuse my absence from recent council meetings and functions. I, Jesse Chris Floyd, have been temporary work in Oklahoma. It is my every intention to continue to serve the city of Florville and our residents. I may be absent from a couple of meetings until June. I will contribute to review meetings, reviewing agenda and notices. Should you have any questions, feel free to contact me through the listed information above." Any discussion, council?
Um, does the charter allow for something like this? I don't think it remains allowed here. Especially if it's a Mayor Prosser, that's another.
Mr. Rosenberg, you want to address that?
If the council chooses to allow the opportunity of the absence to approve it, the charter allows you to do that, ordinarily, you'd expect it to be a year or everything.
Correct. Any further discussion?
Yeah, we're running the charges instead.
I'll have to sign if you guys didn't bring my papers.
Maybe it is in there.
Otherwise, we can make a motion to reject this letter.
Except for that, thank you for your time.
Is there a motion?
I would like to move that we accept this letter and establish our due due.
One second now. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Three, two, one. Next item, consideration of action for a member of the Forum for Economic Development Board.
Mayor, I'm gonna table this item here with these questions that I have to sound that I need to answer this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can hear me right now. Yeah, I'm gonna table this, uh, this item for next.
Is there a second to that?
I'll say aye.
Motion second, Governor Gomez, all of the members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three, zero. We'll table it, uh, soon as we get together with the city secretary and put it back on. Consideration of action to review and approve proposed municipal solid waste collection requests for best viable proposals and authorizing advertising. Mr. Gomez?
Yes, I just want to let the public know that we're working on our trash refuse as we speak. Um, we did send out our dues, and, uh, we're actually working on it with different entities to take over our trash management. Um, there are some positives, of course, that we're looking for, um, and, uh, we're doing everything possible to get the best service that we can for the money that we're gonna pay. Um, in, in that also, we're looking at instilling our own at the same time. Uh, it looks very positive. I've gotten a lot of reinforcement from certain people, entities that are willing to help us out, and, uh, I'll go ahead and, and leave the rest to Sherry, she can fill you in on some of the things that we're looking at, so.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, we have been working with Lou's office. We, um, are looking at going out for a request for proposal for a new contract on our refuse collection. Um, I've been working with Councilman Gomez to make sure that all of the things that we'd like to see, including the rates and the services that we'd like to see in the proposal. We're hoping to go out the first of May. Um, our current trash contract does succeed at the end of September. We will have either a new, a new contract in October, um, and we should have a, a great contract. Uh, Mr. Councilman Gomez and I, along with Lou's office, have put together a great RFP. I'm excited to see it go out. I'm excited to see the return response from a lot of our, uh, client base that we have out there, um, and I think that it's gonna be a positive for the city from before and the projects that we're looking at.
In the specifics of the contract, are we talking about recycling? Are we talking about, uh, community involvement? Are we talking about anything like that in the, in the contract, or is that too soon to discuss something like that?
Um, currently, we're not gonna discuss a lot about within the RFP because we have not released it to put out for bid at this point.
Okay.
Um, just hoping a lot of information about the proposal before it goes out for bid could possibly give some of the companies more information beforehand, so.
That might be something we consider is recycling, although it was a, a discussion with the public that we want recycling in Florida. That might be like an, an option for those.
It's at least an option.
An option, okay.
Right. And, and when it goes out for proposal, there will be a copy of it that is available for the public to view, as well as the companies that are bidding on it. The bids will be sealed until a specific date, and then they will be opened in the presence of everybody who just sent a bid in, um, and we will do a review at that point. So, um, once that goes out, we'll have a copy here at City Hall, and anybody that'd like to see what the proposal consists of will be happy to go over it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one comment to that issue. By my, I think I can say that by presence of anybody's participation, it's structured to be a best value proposal. There's a section under the local government code that allows you to not award necessarily to the lowest bidder, but to look at the overall best value. There are eight factors in the local government code to be considered in your review. So I say that in advance because there are parts of it that somebody may bid a one way, somebody may bid another way, that allows you to evaluate those factors that you think are important and do the best value with some of the items that we don't have to be talking about from time to time, but I just say that for evaluation purposes. It's not necessarily what bidder, best value to the city.
Okay, but what are the services, services that we're, we're requesting?
There's a myriad of options in the way it seems prepared.
Okay.
It's the current service plus several other options, and the reason I'm talking best value is that you're dealing with a prediction that's a combination of services that you want to elect to contract for.
Any other discussion, council?
I just need to add, until that time, we will not know whether our, uh, bill will go out in regards to some of that stuff you all are processing. In other words, we won't know until then?
Unfortunately, no, ma'am, we both know until we open the bids. We don't expect them to be, uh, our, we, we can't say for sure.
When this is released, instead of making it simply available at City Hall so that everybody can see it, why don't we post it on the city's webpage?
Yes.
I have two questions. First, are we still within our timeframe to do this on the bid?
Yes.
Other way, I'm sorry. We had a timeframe of at least six months.
There will be a timeframe included in the RFP, um, and it'll, it'll be released at that point.
And the second, everyone, so. And the second question I have, Corbin, can we get a copy of what Lou just said? That's a requirement in the open up.
A copy of what?
Of what Lou is talking about right now.
The best value.
It's built into the RFP, so it'll be available. And if somebody wants to see the factors, the key factors, I'll give them.
I would like to see that.
Me too.
I'll give them to Margaret, and Margaret will have it for the public from the various of them.
So then, once we take this vote tonight, we start advertising, at what point?
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna get it out as soon as the project is ready to go, and we'll get it out as soon as possible so we can start the project and, and we'll be able to take our kind of money off so that we're getting that best value.
Let, let me interject. You know, one of the main focuses on, on this new alignment is that we want to give you the best, like you said, the best value, okay? We were paying, or we are paying too much for trash refuse. Our services have not been to what we expected. Of course, there's an issue behind that, and why that happened back four years ago, okay? Um, other than that, our, our main objective is to give you the best service possible, and that's what we're looking at.
Is there a motion before?
I'll make a motion for review and approval of proposed municipal solid waste collection request, if I stand the proposal and also advertising.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion by Gino, second by Castillo, all of the members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three, zero. Consideration and action to consider discussing the document directive number two requiring uniform application of saving land policies. Mr. Rosenberg?
Mayor, um, M&amp;S has given the evidence that we have a recommendation, while Lou's speaking, you might need to get that out.
Mr. Mayor, do you wanna, just, you want me to go?
No, we're gonna rush the agenda real quick, so.
The, uh, the management that you have before you tonight is what we're calling the council directive number two. It's just designed to do one simple item, and that is, when we have property within the city that's owned by the city, we want the property to go through the P&amp;G process like any private owner would, and when we have property that's out in the business park, if it's not in the city, we want it to go through the process that is contractually briefed to between the city, the 4B, and the county. And your council directive is simply directions to staff and your subordinate ABCs within the city to follow your internal P&amp;G process where it's applicable, and to follow the interlocal agreement with the county where it's applicable, so that everybody within and without the city is given the same review process before the P&amp;G. The P&amp;G knows that it's gonna be coming with the product, whether it's a city-owned piece of property that's being sold or held, or whether it's private. It simply makes the council's position clear that everybody will go through P&amp;G alike. And that's for short. And my recommendation is that that be a clear policy so that if somebody thinks they're gonna buy something from the city, it doesn't avoid the P&amp;G process.
Any discussion, council? Yes, ma'am.
On that same interlocal agreement that he's talking about, who is monitoring that to make sure that it is followed through?
Sorry to hear you.
Who is monitoring that to make sure that it does get followed through? I know there were some issues with the industrial parks.
The answer to that is land.
Good, good to know.
Can you put a discussion, council? I know it's having a motion to.
Uh, one question, that would include if, if, uh, the, uh, there were changes like residential to commercial, same thing?
I would think, no, it's what I'm trying to say, is that if the city owns a property, and for example, 4B has a contract itself, and the fact that the city owns it through its agency, the 4B doesn't exempt it out from the review process that we call P&amp;G. And I'm trying to make sure that the council policies that are in the charter are in the ordinance is followed uniformly. There's been some issue about whether or not the company's stuff in Iraq, you don't have to follow council policy and planning, you don't have to follow council policy with respect to your other ordinance requirements to go through city. And so whether it's residential, commercial, or any other kind of equity, it's supposed to be uniform.
Any further questions? Any motion?
Mr. Mayor, a move that we consider discussing the council directive number two requiring uniform application of saving land policies.
Motion by Castillo, second by Gomez, all of the members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three, zero. There's two items, F, consideration and action to read and consider resolution of document ordinance prohibiting engine braking, provide for publication and effective date, and to establish definitions and terms thereof. This is the second reading, council.
Mr. Mayor, uh, this is an item that needs to be tabled. If I may explain briefly, we got the text out signed, it looked like so, I furnished them to the council tonight. They need to be incorporated within the ordinance. The notice needs to be published, I can't get published after the last meeting because I didn't have the signings to include our reference. We also do inform our text out that it will be installed by the city inside the city limits, and we're looking for that also to occur in time to make this effective July 1st, per discussion with the manager.
Okay.
They'll be installed by the city, enforced basically by the city or any law enforcement entity, and they will be published in the paper, so there'll be another shot for the public to look at the ordinance and bring it back to you. And the July 1st would be the effective date that I'm proposing to you.
Is that a recommendation to table item? The motion?
I'll make the answer to the table.
Second, the second to table the engine braking ordinance, all of the members say aye? Opposed, motion carries three, zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I ask you one quick question in reference to that, or Mr. Rosenberg? Uh, if there's a state highway going through part of city limits, will that still apply to that state highway?
Anything in the city.
Okay. Even though it's a state highway, right? We can still enforce it?
Even though.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is M&amp;S ready?
Yes.
Okay. There's, uh, two concerns that we hear about in the public, one of them being our, our infrastructure, and so after tonight, we're talking about our master plan presented by, by M&amp;S, uh, and they will be discussing, uh, all the infrastructure needs, including wastewater, water, streets. So, Keith, go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Keith Woods, and we're in the M&amp;S hearing. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna ask you, do you want us to present the entire master plan as we did previously, or do you wanna just focus on utilities, or how, how did you wanna do it tonight?
Can we, we sound, there's more concerns on the, uh, water. Wastewater, wastewater.
Okay.
Wastewater and, uh, add streets to that also.
Okay, all right. Let's move forward to, uh. Drinking water?
Can we put it on the back wall where everybody can see it? Yeah.
Yeah, put it on the front.
Oh, that's, that's on the main floor. Turn right here. All right. Okay. Like I said, we presented this master plan a while, a while back, totally, and these are some slides taken from that master plan, um, talk about water, increased water. Uh, basically, uh, master plan was answered two questions that relates to drinking water. Is the system in compliance with TCQ minimum requirements, and has the city secured adequate water resources to meet the needs of the increased population? M&amp;S conducted the analysis of five categories with which TCQ regulates through minimum standard, capacity standard. M&amp;S found that each of these, each of these, the infrastructure currently in place is sufficient to meet the needs and exceed the minimum TCQ requirements. Uh, next, M&amp;S obtained operating data for the past several years from city staff. This data was compiled and analyzed to determine what percentage of the current production capacity is being used. It was found that during months, the city currently uses about fifty-one percent of its permanent supply. Uh, and then, early on in, in the presentation, we talked a little bit about population, and we analyzed that, uh, but the population projections were reviewed, and, and the future demand was calculated based on those population projections. Um, the result indicated that in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, the end of the timeframe as it was reviewed in this ten-year master plan, uh, the city can expect to be utilizing about seventy-six percent of, seventy-six percent of the permanent supply, uh, to meet the peak month demand, as seen on this graph. This value is well below the production capacity, and is also below the eighty-five percent mark, which is when TCQ mandates that plans for acquiring additional sources be developed. So as it's related to water, um, I'll go to the next slide. As it relates to water, uh, there are adequate water source, uh, and it has been secured for the immediate future. Uh, we did find two deficiencies in the city's water, uh, portfolio, but basically, uh, they were, there's no means to assess the impact of new customers on the distribution system, which could lead to negative impact on existing city resident, residences, but that is my understanding being, being addressed by, um, by the impact fee study, and we'll talk about that with wastewater also. So that, that is being addressed from my understanding. Uh, number two there is, uh, the, the no impact fees, uh, for developers and paying their pro-rata share of drinking water infrastructure. And then, we recommend what the city should do is create a system-wide water model, so when we do have development come in, and they, they submit their plans and ask to connect to the system, we can know what the impact is gonna be to everyone in the system, and, you know, and, and understand what, what, what's gonna happen. Uh, and develop the impact fees and regulations for adoption, which my understanding is, is underway.
That's correct.
Let's go to wastewater. The existing capacity for the city of Florville wastewater is permitting design for nine-hundred-thousand gallons per day, um, based on when we did this study, which was, when we started this study, which was back in December, I believe. Um, we were, the city was at a monthly average flow of sixty-five percent, uh, with the peak months up to seventy-five percent. Uh, TCQ requires planning and acquiring funding to begin when the plant is at seventy-five percent for three consecutive months. So, I want to be very clear on that, that that threshold of seventy-five percent for three months triggers, you must be planning, you must be acquiring funding. So that, that's not when it has to be built, not any of that, so just wanted to be clear with that.
Can we stop right there? Do we have any, any questions from the audience regarding wastewater? Cindy?
Now, these are minimum requirements, though.
Correct.
To be proactive, you would actually wanna start before those requirements are reached.
Correct, yes.
I have a comment. Your population growth estimate, um, I think it's a little low.
Okay. We, we use historical data for this area, but also for areas that had the same kind of, uh, oil production, and so, and then we used UTSA, did a big study on population, so we use the best information available.
You didn't need to tell you any of that.
You put a shirt on.
Hey, can you, Mike, uh, state the name of the company and your credentials?
Uh, M&amp;S Engineering, um, I am one of the shareholders. I'm also a, um, the, the civil department manager. I'm a professional engineer. I have with me, Daniel, is also a professional engineer. He heads up our water resources department. Um, Daniel and I, and another gentleman, Jared, and Rico, Christian, and Leon, who are residents, uh, helped develop this master plan, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, I listened to your full presentation at the March meeting. In that presentation, you said that, um, the TCQ trigger points of seventy-five percent would happen this summer in the city of Florville. In that presentation, you continued to say that the probability would exist that the city's wastewater plant would be at a hundred percent capacity by twenty-fourteen.
Correct.
In that draft master plan, it states, if the population growth projections are met, there is a possibility of being at a hundred percent capacity in twenty-thirteen. Also in that presentation, you advised that the permit process could take a minimum of twenty months.
Correct.
As I add twenty months to this summer, we're well into twenty-fourteen. That strikes me as alarming.
Eighteen, the minimum is eight months, the maximum was twenty months, and that's what we were stating. Minimum in the TCQ process is eight months.
In your, in your master plan too, you, you basically said that, um, in a lot of, well, it basically said some master plan revealed completing with a competing list of projects with approximately equal priority, which are difficult to set an order of recommendations to. This is not the case in the city of Florville. You went on to say that no wastewater was our most important issue and something that needed to be immediately addressed. I have a question for the city council. Have we started to address this, or are we still putting it off for the summer?
And then, let me answer that, please. Cindy, what we've done, and we, we've talked about being proactive, that's what Cindy Nichols and, and I have been doing with the rest of the staff. We are working with the USDA, who received a grant to do a water and sewer rate study, wastewater, I'm sorry, and that's a process that gentleman, his name is?
Raul Gonzalez.
Raul Gonzalez is gonna do a presentation here at the city council meeting to see what he's found. As part of that, the USDA is the one that will fund the project, and that's what's currently holding him up. He would have been here, uh, a couple weeks ago, but, uh, he is funding other projects. As soon as he finishes that, he will bring the water and sewer rate study to the citizens, to the council, and at that point in time, we can move forward on the funding process. At the same time, we're working with, uh, M&amp;S Engineering pretty regularly on the wastewater treatment plant. We have an actual operator from our plant there. I don't know if anybody's ever been to the plant to see the, the upgrades that have been made, and how more efficiently that plant is running than it ever has. And so he will give you the, the daily flow, the monthly flows, I'm sorry, for January, February, and March, to show you that we're at about sixty percent at this point in time. It fluctuates, and that's what, the trigger is three months of seventy-five percent.
Correct.
So what, so what, that is a funded funding run?
What do you mean?
A funding that, or, you, for the set, project?
It's gonna come out of the USDA on a low-interest loan.
What, what is expected cost of this wastewater plant expansion?
And that would be up to another stu-, are you okay, sir? That would be up to another study that, that we are gonna, uh, do. We have, as you've seen from the, the initial onset of becoming city manager or entered city manager, we had a capital improvement program for five years, and in the, and there it showed about two-point-four million for that project.
Keep going, keep going. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Listen to the TV this afternoon. It says by Monday, the Aquifer in San Antonio will be a phase two. Last year, it went down. We weren't affected because we didn't have the population we have now in this county and in Carls County and in the other county around their area. The farmers are not gonna- The farmers are not going to be able to take any water out of this aquifer because we don't have the water. San Antonio's not going to take water out of there, and a lot of other people aren't going to take water out of there, out of our aquifer. So why does it leave us? If you look at the City of Carnt City and Kennedy, they had trouble with their pumps in the last two years. So tell me where the water is going to come, come from for us here.
Basically, the data that we have is, is the water your supply, City of Floridale supplies adequate for two thousand and twenty?
If it doesn't rain, we ain't going to get, have nothing.
Well, that's, yeah, across the world, it's, it's like that.
And, and, as it says, as it says right now, we are not going to get anything. Where are you going to get? Drink, drink water from a bottle? Take a bath from a bottle? And everything else from a bottle?
Keep going.
All right. Let's go to the next slide and finish the wastewater portion. Uh, and this speaks to some of the things that we're talking about already. The, the graph on here, and it's kind of hard to see, shows the bottom line there is the average monthly flow and the associated peak flows in orange. And again, it goes back to seventy-five percent for three months is the minimum T C Q standard. We're under that, but it's based on our projections that the planning, funding needs to start. And, and that's stated in the master plan.
Let me interrupt you, keep, keep it again. Andy, can you talk about the timeline that we've, uh?
I think this is the day.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to have to ask the public to maintain your comments a little softly. You cannot carry a conversation while this gentleman here is doing a presentation to the council.
You want to talk about the timeline?
The timeline, okay.
Basically, a preliminary timeline is planning and permit development is three months. Submit permit to T C Q. T C Q's review and public comment period is eight to twelve months. And this is, this is all, and, and what he's giving you there actually has dates on it. I'm kind of giving you a summary, you know, the start date may change, obviously it's changed, that, that was April. But it, it gives you an idea. T C Q review, public comment is eight to twelve months. The more public comment, the longer it'll take. T C Q approval and issue of a permit. And then we would bid the project and get the permits, contractor, all of that. Plant construction would be six to eight months. Startup and commissioning, three months, and plant placed into active service after that. So, we are looking at... So, we are looking, what's, what's the total? We are, we are looking at a year and four months, so a year and a half to two years, which is what the gentleman said. For, for the entire process.
Yes, ma'am.
When you were walking up in Spigot, did you anticipate the population boom that we've had?
Yes, ma'am.
Either more?
Yes, ma'am. That, that was all figured in. As you can see on the graph right there. Yeah. And you can see the big jump, that's the, that's the population. Yes, ma'am.
What was the little deal you had then that there was not any way to access the impact of new customers? What was that in relation to? A couple of slides before?
Oh, that was, as it relates to water, I believe.
It was wastewater?
No, I was talking about the water model. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
But, what the, it, it was the water model is what it was talking about. So, we get a system-wide water model where if a big Walmart or whatever comes in, we can analyze the entire system and see the impact. And that's, so it doesn't impact, or it has minimal impact to, to current residents.
I was just wondering in regard to her question, because I, I had the picture from that comment that we really had not taken that growth into consideration, but you're saying we have.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm part of this. Yeah, this, this, this master plan is all based on those populations.
Thanks.
An example, and you're on the F E D C board, is the money that the F E D C paid for the Walmart, the wastewater lines and the water lines, all of that was factored into that. And that's, that's where he's saying the developers should start paying more of that. I know the Economic Development Corporation does that at this point in time to attract businesses, but if there is a, uh, impact fee already to include the, the water and the wastewater study, all of that will come in together, we'll start charging the, uh, development that's coming in.
During the March meeting, Mr. Rosenberg asked you guys for a hydraulic survey. You said you'd get back to the council next week. Is that the same as your water model that you're killing in this briefing?
That, that is the water model, yes, sir.
And you did produce that hydraulic survey that he asked for?
No, no. We provided the quote. Yeah. Or the quote for the work we produced, and that was provided.
So you haven't done a hydraulic study?
That, that's a many-month-long process. I did not instantly.
One question, basically, on the timeline.
Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
I'm going to come back to the statement that's in that draft master plan that says the possibility exists that we can be at a hundred percent capacity in two thousand and thirteen. This says that the earliest this could be completed would be January of two thousand and fourteen. What happens in the interim of being at a hundred percent capacity for completion of a wastewater plant?
The, the, the statement in the, in the master plan that refers to the possibility of the two thousand and thirteen excess of a hundred percent, first, peak flows. Peak flows are what occur primarily during rain events, because then sewer systems are not watertight. Water from rain will flow down the streets as they, as it always does, and some of them will infiltrate into your sewer system. And so that causes art, what is referred to as artificial peaks, where it's not lost sewage that's coming down, it's the rainwater that is increasing those flows. And so what the master plan states is that it is possible that during rain events, for example, we were to have a very wet summer, that those infiltration along with the population increase could push a daily peak over a hundred percent. But what T C Q is concerned about is whether your average, you know, has exceeded a hundred percent.
What is the impact to the residents of this community, residents and business owners of the flow at that facility, be it rain-induced or population-induced, being at a hundred percent or more?
Treatment plants are designed by law to handle an excess of a hundred percent for what is referred to as peak hour flows. Hydraulically, the wastewater treatment plant will be able to handle it. And, and a rain event is a very quick occurrence that happens very quickly, it's over very quickly, and that flow is not sustained. That's historically what you see all over the state, and that's what's seen nationally as well. And so, for a period of time, there will be a peak over a hundred percent, but the wastewater treatment plant is designed to handle that. If when your average flow, when your daily flow of standard raw sewage is up at that level, that's where the extension must be in place in order to avoid adverse impact.
Just to play devil's advocate here, so what happens if it fails?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a problem that you would have, a, a potential problem you could have at any point in time. Anything can always fail. So that's something that...
So what happens?
What happens?
What happens if the wastewater treatment plant fails? Well, then, a, it totally depends on what the nature of the failure is. If it's a failure in a valve, you may just have a little bit of vacuum in the line until the valve is open. If it's a failure of a treatment plant unit, then you may just have lost sewage sit in your holding pond until such time as it can be fixed. The wastewater treatment plant can handle normal standard malfunction such as designed to.
Oh, I can tell you, Allison G O versus the City of Marble Falls. Her house has just been remodeled, and her house was across the street, atop the hill from the city treatment plant, and her house flooded and filled with...
Dark stuff is to everything. That's understandable, that's the nature of the real world.
It does swell uphill.
Greater things have happened, that's for sure.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I think we're pretty much finished with wastewater. We want to talk about the road, road waste as well, because we've talked about all the problems and that. Road conditions, y'all, y'all had a study that was done in nineteen ninety-nine. Essentially, what we did is, is we piggybacked onto that and used their, well, we, we used our criteria, although we changed the weighting of the criteria to what, what we're, we're more used to or what, what we feel and the city feels is, is more important. But, we looked at, at these six different categories, pavement integrity, pavement width, right-of-way width, curbs, classification, and drainage. We added weighting to those, put them into a matrix, and developed on the next slide a list of streets in order of importance based on that matrix. So, what we, what we put as, as a higher priority is obviously pavement integrity and, and the classification. And we, we have a complete list in our master plan, which will help the city plan to use the funding for road improvements and take the highest rank. And again, this changes from day to day. You know, something may happen on a road that ends up making it deteriorate faster, but at, at the time that we did the study, they'll have this list and be able to work from it. And it gives an evaluation score, ranks number one through some of the other streets, and basically set them into, into sections of, of...
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know what the cost is, or does it vary according to the road?
Depending on the condition, the length of the road. Yes, ma'am, but it's funded through a quarter percent sales tax.
But, yes, it, uh, the roads will, y'all have all kinds of different roads. We, we drove every one of them, and you can see some look like alleys and some are, you know, collectors that, that are in, in very good shape. And obviously, to repair or fix a collector is going to be much more expensive than fixing one of those roads. But, that was, we, we developed a priority list of roads regardless of, the classification and the width and the curbs all had a factor in determining where it falls in the list. So, basically, what the city will, will do is that they, as they have funds, is take the linear foot of road and how much approximately that's going to cost and put those into the plans of being repaired.
Was any of this based on usage of that road?
Yes, ma'am. That's the classification.
One, one couple of roads that had never did get fixed, because they said they were not running. My street over there was called, right at the end of my block. They didn't get it. Was there not enough?
How long ago was that?
Well, it was been a few years. Well, they never went back. We all were in all of those. We all dug it.
You know, I, I would, would hope that this master plan, as, as you have now a ranking and we have projected street maintenance tax revenue that is scheduled could be published so that those people that live on Seventh Street would know that it's going to be four years before their street gets fixed, and the people on Third Street knows that they're going to be addressed in the third quarter of the calendar year. We know what the street maintenance tax revenue is, or at least we projected it to be a little over a quarter million dollars a year. We know our cost per linear foot. How difficult is it to put together a timeline for the people that live on these streets? Instead of a map that shows priorities, let's tie the dollars and the priorities to a timetable.
That's a good idea. We could probably do that.
Yeah.
Good idea, thank you.
And, and that's really the end of the, the road section. Again, this is kind of abbreviated of, of the master plan.
Sorry. We have, we have a model street that they deleted last year and two years ago, South Second Street. Is that the model you're continuing with?
That's correct. We're going to do curbs and drainage and, and a pavement. That is correct.
Yes, sir.
If we can go back to the wastewater, what, do you have an estimated cost on construction? What it will cost to build a new plant? I don't know if you mentioned that, if I missed it.
Two point, what did it say, under there? Based on the master plan that was presented in two thousand and nine, two-point-four million dollars.
Two-point-two something, but the round number's about two-point-four million for the expansion.
And that'll take how many years, Cindy?
Twenty years?
Yeah, how long would that sort of, based on the population trends?
Um, I don't think we've predicted it all the way up. We have to take it through twenty, twenty even. Then at the end of this master plan, it was at ten years from this date.
Well, that two-point-two is on two thousand and thirteen in your summary, but you also had a one-point-four million upgrade that was supposed to have happened in two thousand and ten. Did that happen?
On which one, sir?
On your wastewater system?
That was, that was the upgrade that we did, and we were able to obtain that at the cost of eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand at the time because of the, the condition of the economy at that point in time. We got a better price for, uh, the project.
And that's, that was really the end of our, our presentation. Again, we, we tried to stick with the highlights, but our recommendations for action were obviously the wastewater plant design, a comprehensive water model, and then the, the streets with the highest priority. And then we, we, we had that, that in our master plan, you know, that's the immediate actions, and then we have a one-to-three and a three-to-five action plan, so.
Is there any other questions regarding the wastewater? I know that's probably the area most concerned for the community, but we want to be clear on everything that, that the City of Floridale is working on the master plan and has been working for years on improving our, our wastewater, has made some expansion, and now we're at the point that we, because of population trends, that we need some expansion and probably done in, in two thousand and fourteen. Is that what we're projecting, two thousand and fourteen?
We are starting the process already there of, of obtaining the funding for the water and the wastewater rate study, which is the first step. And at that point in time, we can move forward. And as long as we're in the planning stages with T C E Q, we are, are within where we need to be on the planning stage.
We can't build anything in Floridale until we have the infrastructure. We can't build more businesses, we can't build more residential communities, we can't even build a sports park without the, the water and the sewer that's going to support that system. So rest assured that the white wastewater, the streets, the water are our main priority Any other questions? If not, we'll have a, a session from the council. Any other discussion, council? Was there at any time where we had the two months or several two-month periods where it was at seventy-five percent?
It's three months.
Or, what I'm saying, did we have any that were consecutively at two months?
Fifty percent of the... We've not had, not had any one. And that's, Andy has, has new numbers, and they're actually sixty percent. So, in December, it was seventy-five average, monthly average. The monthly average in December was sixty-five. The only time it's reached seventy-five was back in two thousand and seven, if you remember. That was very wet here. And they get into that infiltration, that we were talking about. The other thing that I understand that the city has done is they've, they've done a lot of improvements to help reduce the infiltration also, which in this next coming summer, if it does rain, hopefully it does, the, the spikes won't be as hot. But, I mean, we, we won't know until the rain comes and we get to see it, so. But indications are we're, we're lower than, than where we were in September.
What, what school did you go to?
Texas A&amp;M.
You then? Ben? What school?
I went to school in Northern Michigan.
Northern Michigan.
I'm the principal.
Okay.
Be parent, be parent, it's like, obviously, good.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the services you provide to, to Floridale, keeping us in track with everything that we need for, for current and for future trends in population. Council, any action or discussion?
You know, we, we noticed that back in oh-four, oh-five, there's an increase in our sewage. We, we were, we were running on a, a very thin line at the time. We, we, when we came in, we thought about investing in that sewer plant. We have made upgrades to get us to that point, and I, and I understand where y'all are coming from. But we're, are in the process of that master plan that we set in September. We've really been working on everything that we... We've really been working on everything that we need to, including streets and including the sewage plant. You know, and anything that we can do to make things better here as far as your resources are concerned, we have done what we need to do and will continue to do that.
Philip, Cindy, do you have any questions regarding from the chamber? Anything? Nope. Okay. Yes, sir.
Just had a last, a question on your last comment about on your business or anything. Is the city considering any kind of moratorium or anything to...
We have not issued any type of moratorium, no, sir.
Or is the city looking into anything like that?
I think our capacity can continue receiving more development. Depends if it's, you know, a thousand dollar, thousand home developers, something, we might look at that. But currently, everything is fine. Do you see any need for anything like that, Andy, or...
No, Riles, we monitor that pretty much on a daily basis to see what's coming out.
The mayor just said that there's kind of...
Can I share a question, sir? Any action, council? Yes.
Can I make a motion, exit? City affords a master plan presented by MNS and General.
Motion, my goodness, second, my goodness, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three zero. Okay, with that said, let's go on to the next item in business, which is consideration and action to read and consider a resolution by the city council, the city of Florisville, authorizing improving publication of notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation complying with the requirements contained in the SEC Rule 15C 212 and provide an effective date. Okay. Is our bond counsel here? Yes, sir. Bill. Firstly, any questions regarding certificates of obligation? I know several people signed up to make comments. Cindy, you have a comment?
Yeah, actually, we're trying to get on with comments.
Okay.
I just want to say, please understand why I speak, that I speak on the private business and remember the chamber honor, and these are my opinions. I feel as a plan to be a Florida funding and support complex at this time is a grand mistake. Each of you, when you campaign, been serving, including this community firm. It's my opinion that to accomplish this, it is more important to spend our tax dollars in providing for our facilities with human rest tonight and bringing high-speed internet to businesses in Florisville and maintaining the parks we already have. How can we take on the extension of the support complex when we do not fully know how much these other projects are going to cost? Remember, budgeting for is not paying for a project. And don't expect to sometimes arrive. In closing, I just want to thank you guys for letting me speak and keep in mind that it is the citizens of this community you represent and please represent us to the best of your ability.
Paul, did you have some comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I've got, after this agenda came out, I had a lot of comments. And the comments, and I've spoken to Sherry a lot before, were how the meetings are structured here without asking before a vote for citizens' input to each and every consideration and action item. And we passed a, we passed a charter in 2009 addressing this stuff and it's part of the way this meeting, the meetings have to be conducted. There's a vote, but before a vote, the mayor conducts a meeting, has to ask the audience any citizen input. They don't have to sign up for it, but it's one of the requirements that's in. And I haven't amended that many meetings yet.
Yeah, and I think we did that tonight. We were going that time.
But it's been a complaint, it's been a complaint by many of the people that do the meetings.
They complained to you?
And that's why I'm bringing it to your attention. I gave you all a ten dot on, I give one to Lou Rosenberg and it's part of, it's part of the way the meeting has to be conducted. Thank you.
Okay. George Rodriguez?
Thank you. My name is George Rodriguez and I'm president of the San Antonio Tea Party. And the San Antonio Tea Party is involved in this because we represent well over twenty thousand voters, including several hundreds of them in Wilson County, and one of them while you pick out, but in Wilson County, they've asked us to become involved. The question that's, or the issue that I've been asked to address with you, and please tell me when my time is up.
You have one moment, sir.
Folks can, can defer their time to me if they're with it. Is this issue of the sports complex and whether or not it's really needed? It's been very, very interesting to watch the proceedings that have brought on today. And I wanted to let you know that I have a particular affinity towards Florisville because my father worked for Sam Ford and for Mr. Fitzsimmons for well over thirty years, a little place down at his office, as a printer down here on C Street. And I spent many summers here in Florisville. The question that I've got for you gentlemen, and I believe that Paul Sack really hit on the nail because I've been observing it, and I was with you at the end of the session, where too much of the latter session with the citizens are your bosses. It's not the other way around. These folks, the public, the citizenry, voting, and they are the ones who you should refer to and not who's your temperable. Okay? Now, let me do a stand.
Your minute is up, sir.
Oh, thank you. That's it?
John Morikowski?
Yes, sir. I'd like to pass my time to, to Mr. Rodriguez, please. Thank you. A sports complex would be a wonderful addition to our city. However, the basic infrastructure issue of being, of maintaining it before there's a wish list is very, very important, folks. The ten-year master plan that was just presented, the mayor has stated that the city will begin the process this summer. Well, would it be fiscally responsible to have identified the scope and costs and funding sources that are required for the wastewater plant extension prior, prior to assigning more debt to the taxpayers to build a sports complex? The other question, a ten-year master plan, which was very well prepared by MNS, identifies the need for hydraulic water as a high priority.
Your minute is up, sir.
I wish to pass my time to George Rodriguez.
And your name?
Venice Grantham.
Thank you. The ability to consistently and safely deliver water to businesses and residents should be the top priority as well as public safety for the city, not a sports complex. A sports complex is a great wish, but that's not as important as water, waste, disposal, public safety, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the goals of government. A sports complex would be a wonderful addition after refinancing a significant cost to the taxpayer. The current payment on bonds, I'm glad the bond attorney is here, the current payment on the bonds issued to build the event center is a hundred thousand dollars a year. This obligation jumps over...
Your minute is up, sir.
Joanne Yuha, may I yield my time to George Rodriguez?
Your name?
Joanne Yuha. J-U-H.
Just over one point three billion a year in two, in 2016 and for the next five years. What is the plan to pay these future obligations? Right up the road in San Antonio, they're getting ready to do a half a billion dollars, but we are twenty-four billion dollars in the hole, just the city, never mind the county and much of school districts. And then sixteen trillion from the wonderful victory of Obama. How will this debt be paid? The debt will be paid through Florisville Economic Development Corporation and investors. That's what, that's what it's been said. With the exception of revenue bonds, which are solely paid with the revenue that the project will create or will lead to, that that project will create the stadium, all the bonds and certificates of obligation are guaranteed by the city's ability to collect...
Your minute is up, sir.
My name is Judy Murphy and I'd like to yield my time to George Rodriguez, please.
Thank you. The city's ability to collect the property taxes. Furthermore, once issued, if the city is unable to meet those obligations with interest and a sinking, and there is a sinking fund or payments of the fund, it must be by law, it must be by law, increase the property taxes to meet the sufficient obligation. Florisville Economic Development Corporation is obligated for a hundred thousand dollars per year to the Alamo Community Colleges in the Florisville campus area and they're two years behind. So who's going to pay the price on this, on this stadium? The next thing is the Florisville, the Wilson County...
Your minute is up, sir.
I think Allison Keogh and Mr. Mayor Hargie, but...
I'm sorry, did you hear the name?
Allison Keogh.
Okay. I'll look. I got it.
Got it? Wilson County News reported that the board of directors of Florisville forbids approval of a resolution, approved a resolution ordering a public hearing to gain public input for the proposal of the corporation to allocate a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year for the next twenty years for the construction of the sports complex. During the meeting, it is reported that Jesse Pettis reminded the board that it voted as of September 12, a September 12 meeting, to commit the funds after the city, after the city council requested the corporation assistance with building the sports complex. The city of Florisville has not taken any action, any of these actions in an open meeting, in an open meeting. There has never been a vote of the elected officials to build such a project, to issue bonds, or to offer such a project, or requested the assistance of the Florisville 4D Corporation.
Your minute is up, sir.
Charles Chernowski, I wish to give my...
And mine.
Charles Chernowski. Second name, Donald Backer.
I got it.
Any such request occurred without a vote of the elected officials and direct violation of protection of open meetings. The city of Florisville has not in any open meeting formally approved the planning, design, construction, or cost estimates of a sports complex or a similar facility. Okay? How then can the city council take action to issue a debt for construction of a sports The 1979 DeGaulle Act specifically allows funding of projects by 4D corporations that include land, buildings, equipment, et cetera, et cetera, infrastructure that result in the creation or retention of primary jobs. The act does allow for the 4D sales tax dollars to be used for sports, for a sports venue, but there are some very specific requirements. Most specifically, the project must be approved by voters. A city may submit, says, to the voters a valid proposition that would authorize the use of Section 4B tax monies for specific sports venue projects or a category of projects including the infrastructure related to such.
Your minute is up, sir.
A city may submit to its voter the proposition before an election to authorize the use, before, okay, the election to authorize the use of a Section 4 tax for a sports venue, a public hearing must be conducted before, okay? At that hearing, the citizens must be informed of the cost and impact of the proposed category of the project. Okay? Does that include, am I having the police come in? You got me covered. Okay? So, a facility that qualifies as a sports venue is an arena, a coliseum, a stadium, or another, or another type of area for a facility that meets public criteria. Primary uses plan for one or more professional amateur or athletic events, a key admission when the facility is not blow-by and is not a blow-by owned by a state-supported institution of education. Line and end, those are the things that it's got to make.
Your minute is up, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to give up my time. I'm not on this, but I can know that the charter says I do not have to be on your list.
The charter says she doesn't have to be on your list.
That's a courtesy, the charter requests.
Don't get them. You're getting technical by...
I would like to throw my man in. You just said it's a...
Okay. Anyway, recently, a former city council member and current Florisville Economic Development Board member, Gloria Matinas, accepted the position of the city of Florisville as an administrative assistant at the Florisville Event Center. Her position on the board is the position in question for this appointment. Gloria Matinas is first cousin of current city councilwoman Sherri Castillo. She's saying that correctly. Before cameras, I don't know. I want to be sure. No person related, it says, thirteen point, thirteen point one three, no person related within a second degree of ethnic or marriage or within a third degree of familyhood to any elected official or city. City manager shall be appointed to any paid position, office or worship of the city. Okay. Good. I just want to close by telling you, folks, that's the, the Tea Party is not going to go away, contrary to what the lawyer and other democrats keep running on the Biden office, that we're going to go away. The Tea Party is not going to go away. We're just saying strongly, we represent the people. I want you to go back to the 1970s when remember when Russellista knocked out a bunch of folks that used to run, they used to run, rush out over folks. This is the new movement. We represent the people because the people cannot be told and will not be told by people that they elected, by people that they elected to be clients or rush out in need. They have the right...
Your minute is up, sir.
And they will.
Bill, Bill Augustus with our bond counsel, he's with full brother, Jaworski.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bill Augustus, I'm currently full of Jaworski, with bond counsel for the city.
Get close to the mic.
There's no mic.
Hold the mic.
The action of the city council is considering this evening as a resolution authorizing publication of notice and heading to the decision of the certification.
Can't hear you.
What?
You're fine, Bill.
Uh, here, 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 about a year.
Nothing. Go ahead.
The Certificate of Obligation Act permits the city to issue certificates of obligation to finance public improvement in the city. The, it requires that before the city issue a certificate of obligation, the city council will authorize the publication of notice of pension of the city's intention to issue a certificate.
Mr. Augustus, before we go any further, one of the comments that was made by, by the Tea Party gentleman was that the people of Florisville need to vote for the sports complex. Could you inform the city council and the public here when the people voted to have a sports complex?
In 1996, the voter, on May 4, 1996, the voters of Florisville approved the 4B sales tax to pay for projects for the promotion of professional and amateur athletics and sports, including stadiums, ballparks, and projects related to tourist, public parks, park facilities, and events, open space improvements, municipal building and improvements, and related store, restaurant possession, and automobile parking facilities. That vote occurred in 96, it was approved by the voters. The 4B corporations could issue revenue bonds under the Development Corporation Act. Revenue bonds are a more efficient source of financing than certificates of obligation. The Certificate of Obligation Act permits the city to issue the certificate under its own name and use the revenues from the 4B sales tax to pay for those certificates. own name and use the revenues from the four B sales tax to pay for those certificates. The, the certificate that, that the city is considering this evening will be paid by the city under an interlocal agreement between the city and the four B corporation, and the amount that the city is authorizing to be published tonight, noted, given, notice to the public is not exceeded one million and a half thousand dollars. That, that amount will be sold based on the interest rates at the time that it's better sold, and if that debt can be covered completely by the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar a year payment for the four B sales tax.
Yes, ma'am, one comment, yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Yes.
What you read, is that directly from the ballot in nineteen ninety six, or is that just from the general thing? I remember being on the four A board, and I don't believe that's exactly where that was on the ballot.
It's, it's not the four A, it's the four B.
Exactly, I understand, but that four A board did not be established until that was passed.
No, no, we're talking about two different things, Sarah, we're talking about a four A tax and about a four B tax.
But is that exactly how it was worded on the ballot?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a copy of that? Because I've been requesting it.
Okay, in your question regarding the four A tax, Sarah?
I'm sorry?
In your question regarding a four A tax?
I was-
On May fifteen, two thousand and four, the people of Florisville voted for the adoption of a one percent, one fourth percent of one percent sales tax to form a four A corporation, authorized to do a four B project, that being, that project being a sports complex slash entertainment center slash activity center. The people of Florisville have, have asked this to be done, we're just following through with requests of the people.
But I was wondering if what you read was that it was on the ballot, and is that-
Yes, ma'am, this is, I have a sample ballot right here.
Okay, thank you.
But that's for the, for the four A tax, this is-
The course that's still passed.
Yes.
So this refers back to the one half that's still passed.
Yes. Yes, sir.
This was requested, when you invited us in?
Uh, it was on the ballot, May fifteen, two thousand and four, none of this council was here.
But this council's pushing for it.
Yes.
With somebody from, how many years ago?
Uh, five, uh, two thousand and four, eight years ago.
So it was on the ballot in nineteen ninety six?
It's two, two separate taxes, the four A tax and a four B.
So why didn't you say that?
I'm sorry? I could only answer what this council wants to do.
So why, why do you want to do a math?
There is a need, and we'll talk about it in a few seconds, but there's a, there's a major need for additional fields, not only because we want more fields because of the population, but there is an exact need because of the conditions of the fields. Yes, Cindy?
Why are you addressing building a sports complex prior to addressing the problems we have in the parks we already have? Uh, my children, for instance-
Cindy, that's part of the, the proposal we'll be doing, we'll be fixing some of the parks. Yes, Jim?
I, I, I find it very, very interesting and subject entertaining that we are going to assume one point eight million dollars worth of debt based on our ability to raise ad more taxes.
No, sir, you're incorrect.
That's our ability.
You're incorrect. This is all paid through a sales tax, just, just like you, uh, made-
Then, then let the four B corporation-
You made comments regarding the event center, the event center is a hundred percent paid through our, our sales tax, this is the same concept.
Would you let me finish my question before I'm interrupted?
Go ahead.
If we are going to assume the debt of one point eight billion dollars by the city, not the four B corporation who's collecting the sales tax, based on the fact that the four B corporation is promising us this money?
Correct.
We're assuming the debt. We don't have a plan that has been approved by this council, that has been presented to the citizens, you know? We're, we're, we're sitting here in the dark saying, okay, yeah, let's give them one point eight million dollars, they haven't told us what they're gonna build yet. That was evident by Cindy's question, what about the existing part? Oh, it's in the plan, but you haven't seen it yet. Let's see the plan so we can support it before we see the debt. Let's see the plan and the cost of the sewer system, let's see the plan, the cost, and the plumbing sources for the sewer and the water system, and have all those eyes dotted in, eyes dotted.
As far as the sewer plant, I think, as you addressed, a USDA loan.
USDA, eh, loan, he said brand.
He said loan, he said loan, he loaned.
Loan, okay, more debt, so there's some debt over there.
Thank you, that one minute's over, yeah, thank you. I thought you gave up your minute.
Why don't you pay that, what you, you're two years behind paying Alamo College? If you got this money from the sales tax, why aren't you up to date on your debt?
On what debt?
Alamo College, that's what I'm saying. Well, I mean, if you owe money, you owe money.
Well, let, let, let me just say something, when somebody says, why are we pushing it? I never said I was pushing it, I don't know where anybody got that idea.
Well, it's on the agenda, you probably get the motion, you put your, put your amount.
Agenda doesn't say what, it's for.
Just be more, just more respectful to the gospel.
I don't believe that I've been disrespectful to anybody.
That's what you had.
Uh, so if I could continue. This, this was an issue when I read this on here, that made my stomach turn because something's telling me it's not right, something's not right. Even, I even lost sleep last night because of this. Uh, when you read this, if I was sitting out there and I'm reading it, I was questioning, what, what is this for? There are eight sports complexes, right? So that was my first question. I thought by the Deputy D C having a public hearing, that we're gonna do that before we did this, I think we're putting the park before the horse. You know, we end up in set, you know, we had a gentleman come and give us an idea of what, what is, what, what, and so on, and so on. But going back to Deputy D C and, and then, they, they still owe the college the money. And I spoke with Jesse today, and I asked him, Jesse, have you paid it, or when you have paid it? And he said, whenever we have the funds. And that didn't make sense to me, why did they tell them, are you gonna do something? And they don't do it. Okay? Uh, so now we're gonna ask them to give a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for twenty years, when they still have jobs that they haven't done, they, they've had to lay, delay some of their stuff that they had ongoing to lend us money to finish the, the event center. They had plans to do the, 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 taking behind all the city, uh, buildings there, that was took a stop. We have sewer problems, they were gonna get involved.
John, I'm gonna ask you, get back to the agenda item.
Well, this, this is what the agenda is. You know, they're not actually doing Deputy D C projects. We're, we're asking them for money, right? If they can't pay their bills elsewhere, how are they gonna help us for twenty years? We're not aware of, so, you know, I don't want to be accused of doing something we haven't done, and we, uh, uh, asked Deputy D C to, to see whether they could, uh, fund it or, or give us some of the money, that's if we went with the program, we haven't gone with the program yet, so if nothing happens, nothing happens, you know, the money's still there with Deputy D C. So, uh, I just, I don't want to be accused of something, doing something that I haven't done yet.
Carolyn, could you address, uh, Carolyn here, could you address some of the needs that are out there?
Well, as far as the need for additional fields and a, more fields and the quality of fields needed, that's evident, that is evident, I've been working, uh, for a short period of time with some of the youth organizations, and, um, our fields are basically being swallowed up by the river, the quality of the equipment that's out there isn't in the best shape, and they are all, you know, looking forward to additional fields and better quality fields and fashion stands, um, so if that, I mean, as far as that, it is evident that we do need additional fields and, um-
Mayor, may I add something else, too? Uh, everybody else said that we need fields, uh, but I have even been approached by individuals that say, hey, we, we live in Florisville all our lives, we can, we can do the field ourselves, and I'm more than sure that there are other people out there, business people, that are willing to volunteer and do stuff, if we can provide the, the land.
We have, okay, we have a bunch of people here.
Now you have all field people, you don't think they would want to donate muddies for this purpose? I'm sure they would.
Yeah.
You have to have the infrastructure first, uh, bringing these all companies in, and they're the ones that have helped generate the funds to do those projects.
Do you have discussion, George?
Yeah, actually, in, in September, we did bring all these associations together. Um, you know, it's, 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 um, it's good to see a turnout like this because it's something that we have, because we never have a turnout like this. But let me say this, these issues, these have, I have brought these to attention of everyone for the last, since September, and there's no way that I brought every association here to say we can build it on our own. Since two thousand and four, I've been asking for about ten to fifteen acres and never granted that, that, that acre for these kids. So you can sit there and tell me that, that it has not been brought to your attention, it has been brought to your attention. We brought each one of these individuals, each one of these associations, each one of these kids, each one of these parents, including yourselves, which I understand, I understand what you're coming from, I know where you're coming from, but we have done that, I've tried to get all the associations to work together, I say, get me this much acreage and maybe we can build it, maybe we can build it. What you're, what y'all are missing is this, okay? These fields will not only help our, our kids, and you know what, I'm, I'm gonna comment on something, um, it has made athletics and sports and coaching my daughters have made them better people, I'm telling you that right now, and you know what, you, the management is, is, you know what, I'm gonna tell you right now, it's made my kids better people. Discipline, they learn how to interact with people, social networking, whatever it is that we, that it brings to my, to my, to my kids, it's made them very, very good character, and it's a pillar, it's a pillar for me as an, as a father, to see these kids and each one of these kids and reinforce them in our community. And let me say this, I have brought this to the attention of all the public, and I've never seen this many people today, I have, I have not seen a businessman step up and say, and, and I even said, we can build a biscuit, all, all of them came, I mean, we met for them for months, and no one stepped up.
Well, can we ask the chamber to take the lead on the project, I mean, let's see what, uh, what the business can do, a light pole costs about twenty-five thousand dollars, I'll tell you that right now. Can the chamber take the lead on that and, and reduce the cost?
Yes, sir, we can show drive.
I'm gonna ask Joanne, and then you come back to Cindy.
I would just like to share, it's not that anybody here doesn't want a good facility for the children, it's called putting things in priority, and without the infrastructure necessary to bring in business, to bring in more bonds, if we have that, then we will be able to do our parks and to do our ball fields, which you've got to prioritize.
You know, part of the funding on this is, is part of, is infrastructure, you know, we keep on talking about Rancho de las Ganas, that we're, we're gonna bring, make it a destination area, we want people to come and visit Florisville, and, and Sarah knows this, and Miss, uh, Lawana knows this, you know, this is the historical part of Florisville, how do we build things over there without the water and the sewer? And part of this project right here is funding that. A big part of the one point eight megan is putting water and sewer out there, so possibly that we could attract a hotel out there. Or a restaurant, some retail, but it starts somewhere.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, I say something else also, um, what's the hurry? Want the hurry to do this? We haven't even received, uh, the, our, you know, final line.
What would be your timeline, sir? What would be your timeline?
Well, not right now.
Cindy?
Um, I just want to ask something, have any of you guys looked at how many people that actually, now, bear with me for what I'm saying, that actually live within the city and have children that live within the city actually use the park? Because as I understand it, eighty-five percent of the kids that are enrolled in the sports programs are from the county.
Well, probably eighty-five percent of the people here are from the county also.
Exactly, but you can say that the city taking on this project, or looking at taking on this project-
Yes, ma'am, we have like that, you know, for different cost structures for people within the city versus those that are outside the city, yes, ma'am, those are being considered. Look back.
Founder Rudolph Miller.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate that your daughter's learned a lot with the coaching and everything, but would she also, and everybody else benefit from a high-speed internet that they could have at their home, that businesses can use?
And you know what, you have a point there, and we have, you know, we, everything-
One point two hundred dollars.
You're talking about infrastructure, right?
Yes.
Okay, since September, we've developed a master, we've actually taken that by the reins and actually ran with it, we need infrastructure, there's no, there's no doubting that, we, we started, you know, the street maintenance tax, you only acquire a certain percentage of that just for street, that's it, we can't pull it out and, and build a sewage plant with your street maintenance tax, you can't. You've got to understand that every, every entity has a certain amount that's, that they're creating from this tax.
Yes.
Okay, now, now you're saying sewage, right? Okay.
I'm a pro- I'm a pro believer-
I'm a pro believer, look, look, some of you are businessmen out there, and women, okay? I asked somebody the other day, and this has a lot of credibility, I remember when a certain entity would sell a certain thing for a quarter, that doesn't happen anymore. You, you, you have to buy, things have changed in our community to where you have to keep up, taxes have not been raised.
I'm sorry that you're not answering my question, sir.
Taxes have not been raised, okay? We have not, we have not inserted any type of sewage impact or, or increased any sewer fees, no water relief, ma'am.
I'm questioning about the internet-
We have not increased anything.
That, that's not the issue.
No, the issue, ma'am, is this, we are putting-
You want, you want-
No, ma'am, if you didn't let me speak, I'll let you speak.
Sports complex.
I'll let you speak, ma'am, okay? I'm telling you that our resources is what we're working on, we've made that master plan, we've created that to move forward. If, you know what, should it have been done ten, twelve years ago, yes, no one expected to grow to Florisville, no one, but everyone's set on Florisville back then, it's not Florisville back then, it's, it's, it's exploding here.
The show of hands, how many have actually been to the park in the last few months?
I go every other day.
To the city park?
I go to Pecan Park, then State Park, and the City Park.
On opening day, there was probably like five hundred children out there.
May I have a, again, to my question, uh, why could this Deputy D C not continue with the one point two million dollars for Time Warner to get to the high-speed internet here to put one point eight million to have sports complex, when the high-speed internet is going to fund that infrastructure business?
I think we did talk to Time Warner, we talked to local businesses, Luke, can you address that a little briefly?
I'm sorry, Bill.
On Time Warner, just a matter, there were two issues, one was continuing the business of being in the internet activity, and we backed out of it, and we reached the research department, and we had to back the room here, and secondly, was just the sheer cost we're gonna have, we have it helping you enable, we have it through the school district, we have it through the hospital district, and we're getting it for life this year, and going to follow. One of the other things, Mayor, is, uh, as a slide comment, we did present the Time Warner project to the citizens, and it turned out, and you remember that, you remember that that it was brought up and said, why are we gonna spend money on that, we don't need it? And it's, it's in the archives, it's in the records, and, and that can be pulled up, we did talk about it.
Okay, let, let me, let me suggest something, this is not a luxury item that we're talking like you mentioned, this is- This is something that is very much needed because of the growth. Would there be a group of people to get together with the council and city manager and assess the needs? And how do we move forward with this project? How do we make that happen? Cindy?
I'd say we move forward cautiously. I'm not against a sports complex at some point, but I think that we need to slow things down a little bit and we need to do some other things.
Well, this is, we've been talking about this, like Mr. Gomez said, for over six years. I know since I've been here.
And we didn't find it adequate. I mean, not at the time, in 2004. We tried whatever we could to just get some type of labor down there. And because it's 4A, we couldn't.
The restroom facilities at the City Park probably can't be renovated. They probably would be torn down and fixed. I mean, that costs money. If we want to put a light pole up, like I said, they're $25,000 a pole. We're not talking about a large amount of money of 1.8 million over 20 years. We want the support of the business community. We want the support of the residents to make this happen. Let's get together. Anybody want to volunteer? Let's sit down and we can talk. Can you talk tomorrow afternoon?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment. I'm sort of glad that sitting on a committee to help the city look at a sports complex. But I agree with very much with what Cindy is saying and what Tom Guerrero has said and what the bulk of these people have said here. It is a priority issue. And when we can say we've got all of these other things addressed and funded and complete...
But it'll never be complete.
And we have the resources to go forward.
The city is evolving. It'll never be complete, sir. It will never be complete. Our maintenance will always be needed.
I'll put my services with those conditions. If we can look at the other projects that need priority, have those funded and plans in place.
Jim, we've talked about all the projects tonight.
We haven't defined the funding for all of them. We talked about loans. We talked about funding pieces that were not defined. We don't know what it's going to cost. We talked about a hydraulic survey. They issued a quote. We don't know how we're going to fund that, but that's an immediate need of the city.
Paul, you have a comment?
Yeah. Mayor, I would think that we're all sitting here in the dark. We don't have a plan for this sports complex or what the money is used for. And I think it's incumbent upon the city, yourself, the council, city manager, to put together an outline of where the money's going to go, what you expect to do with it.
Okay. And then you'll support it?
I would support. I would take, I think all of us would like to look at the plan, how it's going to be, how it's going to roll out and over what period of time.
Jim, is that all right here?
Go ahead. I have something. The council approved in an open meeting, $5,500 fee for a consultant to come up with that plan. The plan was presented in an open meeting. And the way it's spelled out, the way it's configured, is on a menu-type plan with costs associated with each specific deal that the lead plug, Mr. Gomez said, had sat in with and said, "Here you go." But the one thing that, the only thing that was grabbed out of that deal was that it was going to be a $30 million project. But that's a matter of case. The case is that the plan was presented in an open meeting. And the plan is here. And the plan has always been here and has been discussed over and over.
It's going to be published on the website, Andy.
I'm sure we can publish it on that.
And then we would support it, Paul? Jim?
That's what I look at.
Well, I'm saying if we come up with a plan, we've designed, and they have a good final, that's why it hasn't been presented.
Yeah, because what Andy's referring to was a gentleman that you hired out of Bmail to help us determine what our needs were.
Correct.
He did not present a plan.
No, I agree.
And this plan was never approved by the council?
I agree with you. I agree with you. He did an assessment.
He did an assessment.
Correct.
What we would like to see, certainly before we assume any debt, is what is the plan?
Okay. We can do that. Anybody want to be a part of the team that puts us together? Cindy? But this is not a plan to knock it down. It's a plan to, let's get the community to support.
The plan to form something honest and reasonable, honest place. Not to try to pressure to approve.
No.
What we tell you, Mayor? Hey, I'm in with every plan. We're going to set a date of execution, and that's where I'm going to have my input. Because I'm not against a sports complex.
When we deal with contractors and construction people, it's a timeline.
I'm against how fast we're trying to move this through when there's so many...
But Cindy, it isn't fast. We've been talking about this for years.
Yes, sir, but still, there are priorities that are just higher.
And we talked about the main priority being the wastewater. Bill, continue.
The Certificate of Obligation Act allows the city, in effect, to partner with the 4B to pay the debt and the 4A to allow for the construction of the project on the property that the 4A corporation owns. So the city does not have to incur the cost of buying land to construct the facility. The facilities are consistent with the purposes that the voters approved for a sports complex in the 4A election, and they're consistent with the purposes that the voters approved for the 4B sales tax. And that's what allows the city to use the Certificate of Obligation Act to build the complex and pay for the debt with the 4B sales tax. The 4B board published a notice of intention in there, and a whole public hearing. The 4A board will meet and consider leasing the land necessary for this to the city. And that is the nature of the project that is described in the notice of intention. And that is the nature of the action that the city council would be authorizing tonight. Cindy, the publication of the notice of the city's intention to issue certificates of obligation.
There's three entities working together. The 4B, the 4A, and the city of Florisville. The 4A actually owns the property. They would lease it to the city of Florisville. 4B would be financing the debt. Actually, the city of Florisville financing the debt, 4B would be paying the debt. Would that be correct, when you're saying this, sir?
Yes, sir. The other thing to consider is with both the 4A sales tax election and the 4B sales tax election, each of those entities can only use those funds only for the types of projects that were included in that proposition. And I recognize the city has a lot of needs, but some of those may not be eligible to be paid for or financed with the 4B or 4A sales tax.
Okay. So we cannot finance the sewer treatment plants?
Correct. But doing this this way does not tie up the city's own borrowing capacity from its own revenues to address the other needs the city may have.
I see Victor Kidogras in the audience. I'm going to ask him to talk about some of the numbers. Are you finished, Bill? I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Victor Kidogras, our financial advisor with Southwest Securities, has been a representative for a number of years. Go ahead, Victor.
Audible, Mayor, remember this, Council, we should go off. Thank you for having me here with the city of Florida. My name is Victor Kidogras with Southwest Securities. And we represent the city under financial advisors. As Mr. Argyle indicated, the authorization or the notice of intention resolution that you're considering tonight is not, you're not issuing debt right now. It just starts the process for you to be able to finance this project at a later date. So we prepared just a quick presentation, pre-presentation, so that if you do start moving on the process and then you actually do end up issuing this debt, we wanted to show you where the revenue sources are going to come from to repay bondholders of the certificate of obligation. First, there's some key points regarding this project. As you indicated earlier, the entire debt is going to be repaid by the Florisville Economic Development Corporation using their 4B sales tax collection portion. Right now, through previous action, the FEEDC has committed $125,000 to be used for repayment of debt for this project, and that's going to be locked in over the next 20 years. So because we're going to use their revenue source of $125,000, we're going to structure the bond issue so that your annual principal and interest payments do not exceed that $125,000 commitment that you receive from the FEEDC. Because of that, all we're doing here is we're using the city's credit in the city's name to try to get the best interest rate possible. As I was indicating, these type of instruments, because it has the city's name directly instead of the 4B corporation, they will get a lot lower interest rates. The interest rates that you're looking at and lowering because you're using your name is probably about 3.7%, which is approximately 4.7% or 5% if the 4B corporation were to issue that debt by themselves. So again, the cost would be higher if the 4B corporation issued that debt. So right now, based on current market conditions, and this interest rate is relatively conservative, is that if we're to be issuing these bonds tonight, which we're not, we could lock in an interest rate for a 20-year period. Again, this is a fixed interest rate of 3.7%. What that interest rate has allowed us to borrow in terms of the principal amount, based on $125,000 per year payment, is approximately $1,751,000. The resolution that you're considering tonight has a not-to-exceed amount of $1.8 million so that if you start moving forward and you get to the point where you're ready to issue bonds, you can't exceed that $1.8 million. We left a little cushion there because as low as interest rates are, and you know, who knows what the market is going to do when, if you actually issue this debt, interest rates could be lower. So if we were to receive a lower interest rate and lock in an interest rate of, let's say, 3.4% instead of 3.7%, then that's when we could borrow up to the $1.8 million. But again, it cannot exceed $1.8 million. So this is basically just a spreadsheet. This is assuming you start moving forward with the process tonight and assuming you issue this debt in the future, lock in an interest rate. This is what we call a spreadsheet. This is basically a summary of the transaction. It just indicates that we are going to look for and require for bond bidders a fixed interest rate. We're not going to accept any variable interest rate. It's just going to ask to be fixed for this amount for a 20-year period. This bond would be structured like your existing bonds outstanding in that you're going to be paying semi-annual interest payments on March 1st and September 1st of each year, with the first payment due March 1st, 2013, which is your next fiscal year. Your principal payments are going to be due annually starting September 1st, 2013, for 20-year periods, with the last payment being in 2032. So you call out to it being September 1st, 2021. That's the first time where we could refinance this debt without any type of penalties owed to the bond investors. Based on this parlay, we believe that the best way you're going to get a lower interest rate and lower your cost of issuance is going to be through what we call a private placement through competitive bids. Basically, we're going to be discussing directly with, let's say, banks or financial institutions that are going to hold these certificates of obligation in their own investment portfolio, and they're not going to turn around and make a profit by selling them to individuals at a higher rate. And so this is what we call a competitive bid process. And so if you start moving forward with the process tonight, again, you're not assuming any debt right now. You're just starting the process and allowing yourself to be able to do it at a later date. If you start moving forward with the process, then we would structure a bid and send them out to eligible financial institutions that are able to commit this type of funding. What would happen is you could... This is basically just a financing timeline. If you move forward today and authorize a notice of intent, all you're doing is giving a notice of intent that you are considering issuing certificates of obligation in an amount not to exceed $1.8 million. If you start moving forward with that process, we would basically send out these bid invitation packages to financial institutions on June 7th. Then a week later, we would receive those bids and present them at your city council meeting. Basically, we would obviously advise you at that time to accept the lowest interest rate provider. And so we're just going to listen. They're all going to be there one day, so we're going to know what the interest rate would be. The June 14th date is the actual date where you would be authorizing the issue of the bond. You would be locking in an interest rate, and you would be officially awarding these certificates of obligations to the financial institution. If this occurs as presented here, then the closing date of this transaction could occur as early as July 11th, 2012, where you will have funds. And that's just done over an electronic wire. Those funds are delivered to the city, and you could start moving forward with the project at that time.
Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I mean, the city is borrowing the money, but the FEEDC is paying $125,000 a year.
Yes, sir.
How can the city rely on the FEEDC when they're not meeting their...
An agreement that stated there was a pledge or how does that happen in control?
I think your priorities are wrong, and this money should be going to high-speed internet.
Cindy, one last comment?
Yes. I hope you guys realize that even though the money is coming from the 4B through taxes, a tax increase, it's ultimately the...
Not a tax increase.
Well, through taxes that 4B receives. Sales tax. It is the taxpayers' money. And I think that it's very important that you listen to the taxpayers in this case and that you take into account what we said.
But like I said, Cindy, that's fine. We will listen. And I'm going to ask the council, is there any more comments? Victor? Bill?
Mayor, I just... Targeted infrastructure improvements that result in the creation or retention of primary jobs. That's what the Development Act of 1979 said. If we go through the verbiage in the act or if it was on the ballot, it may not be exactly that, but that's the basis for it. And if, in fact, the verbiage for the 4B tax doesn't include internet, what's to say we can't amend it? This has to be approved every four years by the voters. Let's save the money and amend it to adjust that. We're not giving up the money.
Jim, I don't believe the 4B tax is voted every four years. I think you're incorrect on that. Council, considering the comments we've received tonight, I want to ask that we take this item. But I'm going to ask if we can get a group of residents together, see how we can move forward with this project. If somebody will call our city manager or our city secretary tomorrow and volunteer. We'd like to look at this maybe sometime this summer, how we can move forward with this project. I know we've made some commitments tonight from the Chamber of Commerce. But how can we move forward with this project? It's not a matter of luxury, but it's a matter of need. Yes, Monica?
Mayor, I was on the list for public input, and I kept trying to sort of wait, thinking we were continuing that. And so I think somehow we're...
Cindy, go ahead. If you want to come up with a comment, go ahead.
I realized it a little bit after the fact, but thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to say...
Um, I just want to say I'm quite saddened and confused about the sequence of events. Because I all, I, I've heard a lot of rhetoric and a lot of inconsistencies, and, and that concerns me. And I would just ask of you, perhaps it's a point of miscommunication because for months on end now, I have tried to be proactive and tried to listen carefully as to what direction we're going in and trying to support on the boards I'm on, as well as just being a taxpayer. And I've been told over and over, "We are not doing the sports complex. We are not. We are not. We are not." But the, the confusion comes in that we've committed as the FEEDC $125,000. And, but, but that's not because we're going to have it. And it, it just kind of keeps, uh, snowballing from there. We say we're not, and, and yet I'm, I'm hearing you say, "We need to go forward, and we need to push this forward, and we need to get this, get going." So perhaps we just need to use clear language, "We are going to have it or we're not." We haven't had a public hearing and yet understood we were supposed to.
I believe that the FEEDC has a public hearing scheduled for sometime in May.
Okay. Um, I, I just think that perhaps we need to go back and maybe clarify some issues and, and maybe it won't be quite as confusing to many of, of the, uh, public that has come in for you tonight. But, uh, I would ask the council to please very seriously consider, we are beyond beginning in mammoth, absolute astronomical growth that is going to be occurring. You, we've all seen it already, but we haven't even seen the, the major part of it. And I understand there's lots of models. I understand we're beginning the planning. I'm so appreciative of that. But there's always things that can happen with models, with droughts, with unforeseen, uh, events. So please seriously consider that. Let's do try and prioritize, and let's try and take care of what we have to begin with and be real solid so that we can position ourselves well for this growth. I'm not against the sports complex, but I am very, very concerned about our priorities right now. Thank you so much.
Considering the citizens' input, and I'm going to ask that the council table this item. Motion, please, motion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I moved at the table of giving a presentation of knowledge and intention to issues of certificates of obligation.
Yes, sir. Motion, Mike, that feels like, and I'm going to go to the table, uh, issues of certificate of obligation. I want you to say aye.
Aye.
On the post, what you carry is zero?
About $600,000 to $620,000, and just like M&amp;S before they go to their last play. We are at 60% of the permit, way below the 75%. Citizens, don't be concerned. We're watching the, the lift station, the collection system, the circuit. Any red flags, go address it and send it quickly to, uh, Johnson. I want you all to be aware that we are working very hard to maintain the system that we have now. I heard a gentleman say, "Hey, did we ever do the upgrade?" Yes, we have. We've done the, the phase one, which has helped us tremendously. We put it, uh, we put in an automated bar screen that has helped us tremendously with the debris that went in. Now we're averaging less than 10% of debris going into our system. That helps us a lot, and that's why these numbers aren't what they are right now. We have put a new, two new RAS systems that are automated. Everything we have implemented on phase one is all automated. It is not manual. We have intelligent devices. And if there's a high rain, the bar screen's going to pick up speed and continue cleaning. The RAS pumps are going to open up the clarifiers to allow the track not to overspill, but the clarifiers to take in more water. That is also programmable. We have also put a new wet well. We have two 4.0 huge pumps, 25 horsepower pumps that pump this water very quickly. We have two on standby in case that wet well gets high. The wet well that we have now is 25 feet deep and 20 feet long. So it has a huge capacity to not to allow backflow. We have alarm systems, not only at the sewer plant, but we have some now at the other lift stations. We're in the process of automating that, too. So we can control what goes in into our collection system and what hits our sewer plant. The sewer plant's only not about water. It is about disinfection, recycling water. We recycle just in March alone, 16 million gallons of water recycled. And we were way below the average that Texas requires. So we're, our plant is in good condition. It is not the newest. We've still got a ways to go, and that's what the process is here, to go to the next phase and what makes sense for the plant on what the dollars that we're going to have. So citizens, we are trying to do our best to control this. Don't be alarmed that if we're going to be here after December 21st, 2012, the plant is going to be running.